The board meeting will begin in five minutes.
I must inform you on one thing yesterday. I told you Bryce Wilson was going to send that model to the entire legislature.
No, you told me to the chair and the governor. Seventh state board meeting will now come to order. Good morning and welcome to the February 7, 2025 State Board of Education meeting. Board members, please engage your microphones before speaking and turn them off when you're finished speaking. Please note that board members may be using their cell phones and laptop computers to access the agenda and information related to this meeting. Live streaming is available through the State Board of Education website. Would the recording secretary please call the roll?
Kristin Christensen?
Here.
Maggie Douglas?
Here.
Lisa Schoenhoff?
Here.
Liz Renner?
Here.
Kirk Penner?
Present.
Sherri Jones?
Here.
Elizabeth Tegmeyer?
Here.
Debra Neary?
Here.
Eight present.
Quorum is established. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Information regarding the Open Meetings Act is posted as you enter the room from the main entrance doors. The Open Meetings Act is also posted on the State Board of Education's website. Our first item today is CTE Recognition Month. NDE staff members Katie Graham and Sidney Kobza, please make your way to the front of the room for a brief introduction regarding our presentation today.
Good morning. Thank you all for this opportunity to recognize and celebrate Career in Technical Education Month, both in Nebraska and nationwide. As you know, CTE plays a critical role in preparing learners for high-skill, high-wage, in-demand careers right here in the state. Through these programs and partnerships with business and industry and opportunities for students to experience work-based learning, we know we are helping these students graduate ready for post-secondary education and their careers, strengthening both our state's workforce and economy. The other week, I casually came across the Nebraska Superintendent of Public Instruction's 12th Annual Education Report to the Governor. It's from 1880. You actually have a copy under your little Ed Rising bag of a few excerpts, which are wonderful to read. I'll highlight just maybe the second paragraph real quick where it talks about, "An education such as this definition should impart both knowledge and skill. An educated man should be trained to do something as well as know something. There's a sentimental view of education, sometimes it ignores this important truth. And the acquisition of knowledge without skill is not education in its best sense. Neither is the acquisition of skill alone, properly called education." Since this time and probably before, Nebraska has continued to build out and refine what's now called Career in Technical Education, which recognizes the importance of knowledge, skill, and application. We are thrilled today to have learners and educators from York High School, 145 years after Superintendent Thompson penned this report, to share some exciting and more current work that they have underway that's going to help prepare them for their future. So here's to another 145 years of career in tech ed in Nebraska. Happy CTE month.
Thank you, Katie.
Good morning. We are from York High School and I am Reese Hirschfeld. I am the president of our FFA chapter.
I'm Alexis Davis. I'm a vice president of our FFA chapter.
I'm Maggie McCarthy. I'm also a vice president of our FFA chapter.
I'm Keegan Linden and I'm also a vice president of our FFA chapter.
Good morning. We are considered the executive leadership team for our FFA chapter. Thank you for allowing us to share our story. In a recent survey of York's 260 middle school and high school FFA members, results concluded that 6.5% of members have one parent that is directly involved in production agriculture. These results are a direct reflection of the growing separation between the consumer and the producer. York High School lies in the middle of York County, a geographical location that is home to some of the most fertile soil in the United States. Through York's agricultural educational opportunities, we provide students with an understanding of how agriculture plays an important role directly and indirectly in everyday lives. York's agricultural program has three definite goals in mind for students: to give them a good experience, expose them to new things, and hope that this fosters a passion for an agriculturally related career path. In today's global society, it is important for our members to realize that agriculture is not cows, sows, and plows, as they perceive it to have been a generation ago. Our school and teachers work hard to provide hands-on opportunities, exposures to new technologies, and production practices. York continues to break the stereotype that ag education is only for those young people destined to return back to the family farm. Through our school's initiative and student-centered curriculum, we have attracted students from all walks of life and academic life. There are several courses which are linked to dual credit through Southeast Community College. Both York ag educators have been certified to teach welding, agronomy, animal science, and plant science through SCC, York College, and NCTA, and often attend continuing education courses to ensure that we are providing the most timely instruction. The higher-level course offering at York High School have allowed students to enter the workforce directly upon graduating. These students have found high levels of success due to the current employment climate. 2021 graduate Braden Glebe stated, "I am very thankful I had the opportunity to take college-level welding classes in high school. Upon graduation, I chose to enter the workforce and was able to land a $55 paying hour job per hour job within the welding industry."
We also have great facilities at York. For example, a direct result of student interest in plant science has been the development of the YHS greenhouse through which students grow market and sell produce in flora. Through curriculum experiences in biotechnology, landscape design, and horticulture, students learn about plant production process from propagation to installation. In the fall, students utilize the greenhouse for propagating succulents, houseplants, and other flora. During the spring season, the FFA greenhouse comes alive with over 7,000 plants for sale. Students learn about the wholesale ordering process of plant plugs and complete the process of planting, carrying, and growing healthy vibrant flora for customers to enjoy. The York FFA greenhouse is well-known for quality plants and creative floral design for hundreds of customers around town. In fact, in the recent Best of York County survey, produced by York News Times, identified the York FFA greenhouse as the number-two best spot for purchasing annuals, the first being Walmart. Through the program, our students have truly learned what the phrase "farm-to-market" means. One of the most successful programs has been the inflammation and development of our animal science lab. Our spacious and interactive lab hosts over 100 species. Our program is hands-on and students are responsible for all animal welfare and husbandry. This lab reaches all students who come through to see the animals, including our special education population. The individual relationship that bonds our special needs students developed with animals provides a therapeutic and rewarding environment. With over 100 tours given since its inflammation, York's Animal Lab has become a model which students across the state and even nation have based their own labs on. The most valuable impact of the Animal Lab is the way it has challenged students to take an interactive and direct role in animal husbandry. The individual experiences provided by York's Animal Lab have inspired great success among the variety of students. Breeding programs created in rabbits, reptiles, hamsters, poultry, and swine have sparked intrigue through a variety of students. Large animal experiences have also been provided through this Animal Lab. Students have learned how to artificially inseminate, transport embryos, observe live animal births in person and on livestream, over 6,000 views, and provide further care for young animals in a way that reflects current production practices. Our key philosophy within all labs used by York's agricultural program is to provide the ability to see, touch, smell, and taste the diverse world of agriculture. As agriculture adapts and changes to the growing of our population, demand for workers in the trades are skyrocketing. During the 2020 and 2021 school year, YPS made the decision to make improvements to our welding lab as an investment in our students' futures. With growing class numbers, plans were made to grow the welding shop's capacity. Today, we are proud to say that through hard work and planning, the YHS welding shop now has 20 welding booths that are designed to house GTAW, SMAW, GMAW, and oxyacetylene welding processes. This lab has now become a hub for aspiring welders as they work to improve their technical skills. York ag education believes in providing an all-inclusive quality education and experiences for the large quantity of students who take interest in these areas. For each year, our guidance office takes an interest poll from students to help guide registration processes. For the 2024-2025 school year, 170 students signed up for animal science, 95 for intro to ag, 70 for structural system and woods, 96 for welding, 43 for horticulture, and 303 students in the middle school industrial tech courses. Although these numbers are overwhelming as an agricultural education program, we can deduce that our philosophy is attracting students to our program. Learning and... Josie Lee, a 2020-15 YHS graduate, said that "Learning and working in the animal science at YHS really helped to inspire me towards wanting to go into agricultural education. Getting to work with all the different species of animals, as well as collaborating with classmates and members of the Vet Science CDE team, made me realize that teaching was a viable option for me. It's really thanks to that program and the people within it that brought me into the teaching world today." She now is an ag educator and FFA advisor at Fullerton High School.
Our program believes that through involvement in supervised agriculture experience, or SAEs, students will excel through application of classroom knowledge, enhance their FFA leadership, and increase their community contributions. Through our Animal Lab and our greenhouse, we are able to provide a variety of SAEs for over 100 students. Our community has opened the doors for internships and career opportunities to assist our students to develop their SAEs. With only 6.5% of our FFA members living on a working farm, we have been deliberate in developing our program to allow students multiple SAE opportunities. Our students participate in year-round work in our greenhouse, Animal Lab, our outdoor community garden, cut flower beds, and farmers markets. Students also assist with all FFA community service projects. Our teachers visit approximately 100 SAE visits in the summer, including, but not limited to, dog breeding, grain systems, cut flower farming, pollinating, and employment at local stores.
We believe that FFA is a cornerstone of service to the community and the development of leadership for the individual. Through FFA, our members plan, develop, and operate a program of activities that enrich their classroom experiences through authentic and relevant learning. Our program reinforces the belief that servant leadership connects our students to their community. FFA recognizes those students who have participated in educational and community service programs. For example, students have changed over 12,000 batteries in smoke alarms, over 180 homes for the local elderly. Our blood drive has collected over 3,000 units of blood since its inception. Our petting zoo at the community fair has gardened over 4,500 visitors each year for the past 23 years. Our Animal Lab located in our high school has hosted over 500 visitors each year, except for during COVID. FFA provides assistance with the local schools' summer's educational programs. Through our FFA contests, over 70 students qualified for the state competition in 2023 and 2024. Over the years, our FFA participants have been awarded over 190 state degrees, 123 American degrees. We work hard daily to continue growth to our program, collaborate with our community, and encourage members to continue to learn, learning to do, doing to learn, earning to live, and living to serve. Through participation in York FFA, students have embodied the guiding themes of FFA's program of activities. Through detailed planning, goal-setting, and strategic outlining, FFA members have created outstanding programs of events and services. The following quote is from a York FFA alum who graduated from the West Point Military Academy, sums up the experience that York FFA provided. "Being an FFA officer allowed me to understand the importance of serving my community and servant leadership. I am a better person today because of my experiences through York FFA. I am grateful for the learning how to become the best version of myself." Max Comacher. York community and administration have always been major supporters of the agriculture program. We are blessed with the best. With this support, we have been able to implement new and initiative ways to provide unique student experiences. Recently, the community and administration have come to us with an idea of purchasing an entire agricultural campus to house facilities custom-made to facilitate such experiences. And we did provide you with some information on that with a flyer if you want to look at that. But recently, the YPS Foundation purchased the Corteva Research Center. This four-acre, three-building location will become the future campus of the World Class Ag Education Program. As students, officers, and York Dukes, we are extremely excited for this project to take place. Thank you.
Thank you, York FFA. We appreciate you coming. Do any board members have any questions or comments? Kirk, you have your hand up.
So thank you for coming. Yeah, absolutely. So York, I represent you here on the board here, and I'm an Aurora Husky, true and true. So it pains me to say this, but at some point, somebody else has come here from York and showed what is going on, and maybe it was you. Was that... It was for that which God... That's right. That's right. So you're doing wonderful things, absolutely wonderful things, and I applaud you for what you guys are doing. It's wonderful. The one question I did have, I'll keep it brief. So you did the new welding. You have 40 welding areas. Was Cludy the driving force in that? Because he needs welders. Did he work with you guys because he needed welders?
So I think it's kind of been more like countywide.
Yeah.
So there's a lot of local welding industries within York and the surrounding communities. I know Cludy was probably part of motivating that project, but I think the welding industry is starving for employees, and so we were able to kind of help with that, fill that need.
I will just say something briefly. I'm just so impressed that you have 260 members. So you're obviously doing something right. And also just that your list of events includes things like Duke Mates and also the Blood Drive, which are not characteristically CTE-focused or ag-focused, but I know that just does good and then it develops you as leaders and people. So I think that's really important. I commend you on that.
Deb, and then the commissioner.
I'm so inspired. And I'm going to ask our board president and our commissioner if we can have one of our board meetings in York so I can see this facility. Like, I am so impressed. But it also touched my heart the way you included special ed students and gave them access and experiences. So kudos to all of you for the great work you're doing.
A couple of things. The first comment really is for the folks in the audience and the board. I had an opportunity on Tuesday of this week to go to a CTSO breakfast and sit with leaders from our current and technical school organizations, FFA and all others, and was inspired, was the right word, by the students that we have in Nebraska, and optimistic for the future. Specific to this presentation, I would tell you that very little of what you said surprises me, and I'm going to make this about your instructor. Mr. Hirschfeld, you are incredibly fortunate to have as an instructor in the York public schools. And I say that firsthand as an administrator and as a parent. And I say that firsthand as an administrator and as a parent. I had, at the time, a daughter about the age of you who was in young Mr. Hirschfeld's class at Centennial. And at that point in time, I saw a young lady who had nothing to do with agriculture, who became very interested in horticulture and is still very interested in it today, but also became very involved in parliamentary procedure and had some wonderful experiences as a student that helped shape her into being a successful adult today. But the numbers we had at Centennial in FFA were astronomical, and it was because of Mr. Hirschfeld. So, I'm glad to see that he is still plying his trade in Nebraska, and I'm tickled for you that York High School benefits from his involvement today. So, kudos to you, Mr. Hirschfeld.
I'd like to add, too, so we do have a second teacher. This is Rachel Stair. She's phenomenal, and she actually was my first student teacher, and then we stayed on and added as our second teacher. And we recently just hired a third ag teacher. So, with this new facility, we're going to have three ag teachers at York Public Schools, which is awesome.
So, glad that your students can join us and also your instructors. I had the privilege, when I was in high school, not of being in FFA. We did not have FFA in North Platte when I was growing up, but we had, it was called VICA, now it's Skills USA. And I just want to say, and you have quotes from some of your alum, but I don't think you realize until you grow up how these experiences are going to feed into your future, and you really don't know where they're going to take you. And so, I would just encourage each one of you to take advantage to the fullest of every opportunity that you can, and also thank your instructors. I've had the blessing of getting to teach alongside some of my, I wasn't an ag teacher, but I was in the same building as my Skills USA instructors. And it's a very, they invest a lot, and it's a lot of time and sacrifice, and they really care about you. And so, thank you for investing in the students of your school, which affects Nebraska. So, thank you so much. Anybody else before we, all right, all right, well, thank you.
The QR code, too, is actually linked to, we sent the amount to some past graduates, and that's actually a video clip of their experiences out, high school experience, how they shaped their development. So, you do not need to watch it, but just, if you do, click on that, FYI.
Well, we will. Sometimes we have sleepless nights, and it'll give us things to watch. Thank you so much for coming, and good luck. I am anticipating that you still have your state competition yet this spring, so best wishes to all of you, and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item of business is the commissioner's report. Commissioner Maher, please provide your report.
Thank you, President Tegmeyer. First item of business, there are no items that have been identified to be removed from the consent agenda. If board members wish to remove any items from the consent agenda, please fill out the form at this time. If any are removed from the consent agenda, they will be taken up under additional business. Now, first of all, good morning, board. Thanks for being here and appreciate you being here, as well as those who may be listening at home. I have three topics that I'd like to cover during my report today: a brief update on legislative activities, an overview presentation of NDE's budget, and a report on our NAEP results. I'll start with a couple of comments about our work with the legislature over the past several weeks. We've enjoyed several productive discussions with our legislators. One such engagement I'm especially excited to highlight was a morning briefing that we did one week ago today at the Capitol, where we were invited to provide to legislators and their NDE and other NDE staff your priorities and some basics about school finance. I'm truly appreciative of Chairman Merman for his work in setting up the meeting. Without him agreeing to us meeting, it wouldn't have happened, so shout out to Senator Merman. We'll look for ways to continue this sort of engagement in the future as well. As you know, our executive committee has been meeting weekly to discuss legislative bills aligned to your priorities. They've had great discussions, and I'm pleased with the processes we've had at this point and more to come as we move forward. Finally, earlier this week, I was able to provide testimony in support of LB 140, a bill which would require local boards to have a policy in place pertaining to cellphones or some sort of stance on cellphone use in schools. During that testimony, I made it clear that you had already begun to contemplate action on such a policy and that the Department of Education stood ready to support in whatever way possible. We continue to work closely with staff and senators to fulfill legislative requests for information and address inconsistencies or issues in legislation and inform legislative processes. Now, I'll turn over to a brief overview of NDE's budget. Our regulatory and fiduciary responsibilities represent a core part of the work done here at the agency. I'm excited for you to hear today from Bryce Wilson, who'll provide you with an overview of the fiscal side of our responsibilities.
All right, I think this will be popping up here shortly. Good morning. Bryce Wilson, Finance Officer, Department of Education. All right. Wanted to provide, especially for the new members of the board, but just maybe a refresher for the returning members, but a very high review of our budget, what it's made up of. I think there's some information in there, too, that's really helpful to understand as you're working with the department and all of the work that we do. So, I think there'll probably be, it might be a few questions as we go through this, but I'm going to start with a question first and see if anybody knows, since we're talking about the Department of Education's budget, if anybody knows why the budget went to school? Just an easy question there. No?
Why did the budget went to school?
To get a little more sense. So, I should have just left that out, but, all right. Yeah. All right. So, jumping into the actual work here. Real quick, I think one of the things that can be very eye-opening for people when they look at the department's budget, maybe if they see high-level information on it, is that it has over $2 billion that flow through the department. That's a big number, obviously. The interesting part about that, though, is, we're going to talk about what these different buckets are, but it comes to us from the legislature in several different categories of funding, and we cannot move money between those funds. How the legislature appropriates it into those different buckets is how it has to be spent. So, when you look at this pie graph there that's breaking out, it's really kind of eye-catching when you see the vast portion of that pie graph is blue and it says "Education Aid." That's the flow-through funds that go through the department. So, although over $2 billion are coming through the department, over 1.9, almost 1.95 billion of that is Pass Through Aid. That's state, that's federal, that's cash funds, and we'll talk about what those are in a second, but it's significant. So, the portion that's left for operations of the department is what's left, and that's broken into the different categories or different buckets. And the commissioner talked a lot to the legislature about this in helping them understand. We have the regular education, that's the Program 025 Education Administration and Support that makes up 3.6% of the remaining budget. Vocational rehabilitation is obviously a significant part of our budget here as well, and they make up 2% of that remaining appropriation of almost $37 million. Disability determination is the other significant one that has almost 1% of the overall budget there at $16 million. The other two are services for the blind and visually impaired and services for the deaf and hard of hearing, and those are both about $2 million total, so it's significantly smaller. The two big kind of areas that are funding that we get, we have flow-through aid, we talked about, that's the big blue portion of that circle we just looked at, and that's the authority we have to pass those funds through. And then there's the operating portion of our budget. That's where we're going to do the things that kind of make sense to keep the Department of Education running. We're going to pay for the salaries and benefits of the staff. All of us here really appreciate that portion of it. The rent, contracts, travel, supplies, the expenses related to the board, all of that's going to flow through the operations section of our budget. Again, just kind of what that looks like in total, 93% in flow-through aid, 7% in operations when you add all the operations together. The funding sources for the department basically comes in four different categories. We have general funds, which are going to be the funds appropriated from our state legislature that come to the state legislature through primarily sales and income tax receipts. That's what they appropriate out and have control over from the state perspective or state side of things. There's also cash funds, which has increased significantly in the last couple of years because, right up on the slide, it says EFF, but it's Education Future Fund, which was created two years ago and supplies funding for a lot of, a good portion of TOSA funding and SPED reimbursement that goes through the state, but there's a few other things that flow through that Education Future Fund as well, but lottery proceeds, grants from non-federal sources there would also be cash funds as well. And then federal funds has been significant in the last couple of years as well. It's always been significant, but it's been more, a bigger share of our budget with the ESSER funds, and now we have the literacy grant that's also significant there that adds to title, the title grants and the IDA or the other big federal grants that come through. So, the revolving fund, the last one, is kind of an internal accounting fund. That's not a new or additional funds that come into departments, what they provide for us to move funds or charge offices within the department. It's really an internal accounting fund and not a significant portion of what we direct or control. So, looking at the source of funds, so we talked about the big three there is going to be the state, the federal, and the cash funds. When we look at the overall source of funds that are coming through, so that over $2 billion number that I talked about earlier, 66% of that is state funds. And what's going to be really interesting, so this is the total funds flowing through, it includes operations and aid. When I show the next slide here in a second, that pie chart's going to change significantly, and I think this is a key point for you guys to understand a little bit. But state funds is the biggest chunk of our overall budget, includes aid. Federal and cash funds, both have the other 17%. Again, those have both increased in the last couple of years with the ESSER funds in the federal bucket and then cash funds, including the Education Future Fund now. Now, when we look at just the operations, so we're taking that big chunk, the 93% of aid portion out of this, we're just looking at the operations of the department. The state, the blue portion of that circle, the state portion gets a lot smaller. It drops to 27%. So, when we look at the overall operations of the department, 62% of that is federally funded. So, that means that the federal grants that we receive dictate a lot of what we do at the department when you see that. 11% is cash funds are making out the rest of the circle there. So, breaking out then, we're sticking with the operations side of what NDE does. So, when we look at our total operating budget, how is that split between the different areas of the department? So, here we're showing that 60% of our operating budget goes to what we think of kind of regular education, the pre-K through 12 education services, 26% to vocational rehabilitation, or about $37 million. Deaf of hard, deaf, sorry, disability determinations is just under 10%, at $16 million, and then, again, a little over $2 million for both deaf and hard of hearing and blind and visually impaired. So, that's really the breakout. I think the key piece there is understanding, although when you look at our budget in total, it's significant in the dollar amount, the operation portion is significantly, a very minimal part of that, and then the breakout between the federal funds and state funds that go out, and understanding that operationally, we're funded very heavily by the federal government, and when we look at the aid portion, that, a big chunk of that, is going out and is flow-through aid, going to schools and is the primary source for school funding that flows through us. So, a couple of things that are key just to understand our budget process. We have basically a couple of different budget processes that we go through at the department. We have the biennial budget process that happens every other year. Since Nebraska is a biennial budget state, each even year, we have to submit a budget request to the governor's office, and that's done in the fall of the year. We primarily, we bring that information to the board, start working with the board three months before we need the board approval to submit that budget. So, that typically starts around August, June to August of an even year. Right now, we're in the biennial budget process to the point where the governor has presented his recommended budget. That was done in January. At the end of this month, the commissioner will have the opportunity to testify before the appropriations committee to speak to our specific budget and needs, concerns with that, and that'll happen on February 27th. And then, in the May time period, we'll have our budget finalized for the next two years. The other budget process that occurs is what we call the deficit budget process. That's an annual process where essentially, if there are things that weren't provided in your biennial budget, maybe they are things that came up after the biennial budget was determined, you have an opportunity to go in and ask for funding, or, and at times, too, it's actually reducing your budget. If TOSA came under what was estimated, that would be a deficit budget item where we would reduce our budget potentially. So, there's, we have two different budget processes. That one happens every year. The biennial happens every other year.
Any questions? Will you take questions?
Sure.
All right. Any questions or comments? Kirk?
So, you talked about the NDE operations and the federal money that comes in. How much of the federal money, is that different than the money that goes to the schools, or is that the same thing?
So, it's going to be both. So, the federal money comes in, when we have it, when it comes, it'll come in through the aid bucket, that the big giant portion of that first pie chart we showed, the portion that's flow-through, so they, some of them, like, say, a title grant will come through, and it'll say, "This much has to be flow-through aid to schools." It's going to come and be appropriated to us in the aid bucket, but it also allows for a portion to be used and directed by the state agency for work or salaries, administration of that grant as well, and that will come in the 025 or the education bucket in that case.
So, you figured out, let's say we don't get any federal dollars and the money comes to the state. Do you know the number that the federal, do you know that number, the official number that comes from the federal government? Was it one of those pie charts?
Well, it's, there's.
It's a portion of that?
If we got all of the federal funds cut.
Yep.
That would be 90 million, over 90 million of operating budget and... I don't know if I have the aid one. Aid one broke out with me right now.
Okay. That's fine.
Oh, yep. 339 million of aid.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? And so, board members, Bryce's slides are available in Spark, too, if you want to review them later. All right. Thank you, Bryce.
Thank you, Bryce. The next portion of my report, as I previously shared, is the National Assessment of Educational Progress, or NAEP. NAEP was released in late January. NAEP is sometimes called the nation's report card, and our report card this year was not what we wanted to see, and we won't attempt to sugarcoat the results. I will save my comments for after our presentation, but I'm now inviting Polly Bowie up to share the results a little more in-depth. Polly is our NAEP coordinator for the state of Nebraska. Welcome, and the floor is yours.
Thank you very much. I'm going to get hooked up here.
I'm going to get hooked up here.
Yay, there it is. Well, good morning, everyone. Again, my name's Polly Bowie and I'm, I really am happy to be here. Thank you, Dr. Maher, for inviting me. I am the NAEP state coordinator and I love talking about NAEP. So I'm going to give you just a very brief review of what NAEP is. And then we will be sharing some Nebraska results and some national results. The results just came out about a week and a half ago on January 29th. So we have been crunching the numbers and, and looking at lots of information and I'm happy to share that with you. So I'll get started. So I do want you to know that NAEP is the only national benchmark we have in the United States. The results, as Dr. Maher said, come from the nation's report card. And then I also have the website. So you can get on that website and you can spend hours looking at NAEP data. That's the great thing about NAEP, there's so much information out there. So what does NAEP measure? We get a great measure of overall student performance for key demographic groups. We can see changes in achievement over time. And then we really like to look at the differences between the nation and states. And NAEP produces results for all 50 states, Department of Defense. And that is, that would be all of our military schools, District of Columbia and Puerto Rico. And I do want you to know that we do not get individual students or, and we do not get individual school reports. Everything is state-reported. So often people say, how are schools selected for NAEP? And I'm going to give you a very brief review of that also. I will send to NAEP the list of all the eligible schools in Nebraska. And then they, in Washington DC, will, with the psychometricians, pick the sampled schools. They send that back and then I work with our data people at NDE. And then we send back a listing of all the students and all the schools that they have asked for. And then they select the students and they try to mirror our demographics. And so what I mean by that is if we have 20% Hispanic students, they will draw 20% of our sample will be Hispanic students. Same thing for special education, 15% about are identified special education. So they will pull 15% that have IEPs. And then we go to work. I do want you to see the national public numbers on the screen. You'll see how many schools were selected for fourth and eighth grade. You'll see how many students were selected and then the total. And students take either math or reading. They do not take both subjects. Now you'll get to see the sample for Nebraska. We had 210 schools across the state that were selected and for 24. We had about 4,000 students in math and reading and so about 8,000 students participated in NAEP. NAEP is administered every other year, so we had it in 24. We're gearing up, we're going to be giving it again in, in 26. We assess January through March and assessments are done on tablets. And we bring in, people from NAEP come in, the facilitators come in and give the assessment. Each student again is assessed in math or reading. Students take a small portion of the total. And we do give accommodations for students with disabilities and English learners. You're going to see some scale scores, that's what I'll be showing you. The scale is from 0 to 500. And if you look on the left side, you'll see the scale score and then down across the bottom, you will see that long-range data. So here we go, we're going to look at fourth grade math results for Nebraska and for the nation. I'll let you take a look at that. If you look at the dark blue, you will see the national public. And then the gold will be Nebraska and you can see that trend line. We've got the trend starting from 2003 all the way to 24. And so if you look at the very end on the right side by 24, our average scale score for fourth graders was 238 and the nation was 237. And now we will share some information about eighth grade. You can see our eighth grade trended up a little bit from 22, from 279 slightly to 280. And then we were above the national average. Okay, now I'll move on to fourth grade reading results. And I, you can see too, we took a dip from 22 to 24. And we are just slightly below the national average in reading for fourth grade. And I will share with you eighth grade. Again, we went down slightly and we're slightly below the national average again for eighth grade. And that is NAEP in a nutshell for Nebraska 2024. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Polly, let me make a couple of comments first and, and then we'll turn it over to the board, if that's okay with President Tegmeyer, thank you. First of all, I want to say that these results are unacceptable and we won't, won't be making excuses for any of the results. We have a lot of data and a lot of charts we could have showed you. We chose to show you the trend. All the charts are available to you, so I don't want you to think we're hiding anything from you. All the charts are available to you. But I think these charts really sum up and give a high level of where we are right, right now. There are causes for concern. NAEP scores in fourth grade reading have regressed since 2015. And I think we need to get a handle on why that is and how we can reverse that immediately. NAEP scores have regressed in fourth grade math since 2017. The good news is in math, we've started to reverse that trend. We are outperforming the, the nation and the gap is getting wider. So there's, there's a bit of good news here. The bad news is the regression. And the regression didn't just start, as you can see from the trend line, it's been going on for a while. Another piece of good news, our previous actions specifically in regard to literacy were underway. This board said literacy is a priority and we need to make sure that we turn literacy results around even before you saw the NAEP results. So I, I believe that we need to make sure that our focus remains in that particular area. The result should serve as a call to action. And I said this to the legislators that I spoke to last Friday, not just for us in this room, but for all of our state, all of our policymakers and all of our practitioners that are in the education ecosystem here in Nebraska. Finally, I believe the focus that you have brought as a board to literacy specifically this past year and expectation you have of me and my team to execute the plan and accomplish the literacy goals is well-timed and well-placed. Together, I truly believe we will deliver and make a difference. Time will tell and we can't hide the results. So I would say we won't sugarcoat it, but we will work. And we would have prior to this, I think this just makes the urgency all that more relevant. So with that, I'll, I'll turn it over. And if you have any questions of Polly, go ahead and ask.
Deb and then Kirk.
Do they, so I don't have to look through, do they give you a high? So we see the average, do we know like the state that just killed it?
We have some students that are in that proficient area.
Well, no, the state, since they give you state information. So Nebraska is maybe a point low.
I see what you're saying.
Do they give you the guys?
Yes, they do, absolutely. We've got a ranking.
Okay, so we're in fourth grade reading.
Yeah, we are, we not, we're not at the bottom, but.
Well, that's okay, that's okay. I was just curious which state was at the top and which one was at the bottom?
Well, there are, I, I could give you that information and I can get that information for you if you'd like.
I was just curious, just in the fourth grade reading, just to see who's.
Well, I will tell you this, the, the error, the group that is at the top consistently would be the Department of Defense, not the other schools.
Right. If you would take, I, if you would take them out of the mix.
They would, yeah, there are quite a few states that are significantly above us in fourth grade reading.
Like the top one and the bottom one, just in fourth grade reading.
I can give you.
And you can come back to me.
No, I'd like to comment on that too. I think that's a really good question and data that we've looked at. And I almost look at it with my old coaching hat on, see what, you know, who, who's doing well? What's the offense and what should we look at running for the coming year, that, that sort of thing? And one of the things that we've seen as we look at, first of all, that you can move a lot in the ranking by just moving a point or two. And so I want to be, I want to be careful not to go too dramatic on one side. But the fact of the matter is, we've had several states pass us. Not only is the nation going down in, in terms of results, but, but we've had, as the nation is going down, we've had states pass us. So we are researching to see what are they doing? And we think there are some exemplars. I think that's the point you're trying to make is who's ahead of us and what are they doing that we can learn from? And we're, and we're, I think we're on track to do that. We were doing that even before the NAEP scores, so that's the good news. But, but we're also not there in a number of instances. And I think looking at that ranking and, and not overemphasizing it, but learning from it and drawing some wisdom from it makes a lot of sense. And not to miss the point, we'll get you that information.
Absolutely.
Okay, Deborah?
I have two questions. Want, where does your money come from for your operations?
Federal.
Okay, and it's not passed through us in any way?
Absolutely, yes, it is, actually.
It is passed through us, okay.
I, there, in fact, I've been working on a budget, we've been working on a budget. That is submitted and then that money comes to Nebraska.
Okay.
Yes, and it's a federally mandated program for fourth and eighth grade reading and federally funded.
Okay, so that is included in our pass-through dollars that we saw in our budget report. Thank you, okay. The second thing I'm always curious about is how does, I mean, there's so many external factors that play into testing. And certain population nuances can certainly change the results of a test. And, and we see that in our state testing, you know, that there's a very close alignment to economic privilege and test scores. And that's just well researched. But in, in a test site, so it's different students that are selected every two years. And so do you look at population trait trends like? And, and what would you say about the population trends of Nebraska? Like, I mean, I know we have a huge number of students who have been in this country less than five years and come from settlement camps. And, and, and so how do those kind of nuances impact the fluctuations? I, I'm just curious.
Well, I will say for English learners, if students have been in the country one year or less, they're not selected for NAEP. And, you know, we do, we look at the demographics. I would say for the amount of time that I've been with NAEP, I saw the tail end of 19 and then we did 22 and now 24, our demographics haven't changed that much. So they've been pretty consistent. And again, we try to, we try to mirror that when we select. So there haven't been major changes.
And I'll add to that too. And we do, we do disaggregate the data within the department and look at subgroups and try to see how that informs any sort of best practices that we have as well.
How do our subgroups do?
Our, our subgroups are, are lacking statewide, just like they are lacking nationally, depending upon the subgroup that you're talking about.
All right, we're going to go Liz and then Lisa.
Thank you. First of all, thank you for presenting this. I know it's not always fun to be the bearer of difficult news, but it's something we have to look at to fix. I'm curious if we have, and I don't know if this is your area, any data on the, the correlation between the teacher shortage and the decline in testing or in these scores nationally and in Nebraska? Because as far as I can tell, our, our students, the demographics haven't changed a lot. Our kids are kids. And so I'm wondering how much of this is the result of just not having as many qualified, certified teachers in classrooms?
Yeah, I would kind of worry that too, except that we're seeing this all across the country too. This is not an issue just in Nebraska.
So not all states took a dip. Some, many stayed the same, some states went up. A few, a few states, the scores went down and we're all sort of in the same boat. So I don't know that we can pin it on that. I don't know, what do you have to say about that, Dr. Maher?
Well, I wouldn't, I wouldn't add or refute anything to what you've said. I would change it, I would change the, the question a little bit to say, have you seen any sort of correlational data or causation data that says since 2015 or 2017, we're, we're doing something differently? How can you explain the results? And I don't want to explain them away. I think that would be the worst thing we could do right now. But one of the things that we, that are questioning has, has found so far is that in 2016, as a state, we decided to take away writing prompts or constructed responses in our own state assessment. And it's my understanding, we're the only state in the union that does not do a constructed response that takes the NAEP, is that correct, Polly? So, so I, I wonder, and I'm not here to impugn anybody's motives. I'm sure it was done for whatever at the time was, was well thought out. But I wonder today, why wouldn't we start again having some sort of constructed response or writing prompt on our statewide assessments? Because they, our students will necessarily be tested on that, on the, on the nation's report card. So I, I think that is one thing that we're looking at. And we're looking for what else has changed since 2015 or 2017 to, to begin the regression? So we're looking for a number of things like that. Is it the teacher shortage? Is it the constructed response? Is it, fill in the blank?
Thank you, Lisa?
First off, I just want to say, Commissioner.
Thank you. I just want to say that I am extremely honored to work with somebody on this who has a very transparent, no excuses, call to action way of leadership. And so I'm very grateful to you for that. I have spent hours, like you said, digging through the data. And Kirk, to answer your question, Louisiana has some of the best results and I have a copy of their plan here if you want to take a look at it. It's back from 2021. So, thank you.
Any other question, Kristen?
Hopefully this will be quick. Can you tell me a bit about how the scores are calculated? Is that an average score of all the students in Nebraska that took the test? Or is it calculated some other way?
You know, it's just, it's average scale score, yes.
Okay, thank you.
That was quick. All right, anybody else? Let me make sure everyone has a chance. Okay. Well, thank you so much, Polly. We appreciate your time and we look forward to working with you to help our students be more proficient.
Thank you, I'm always happy to help.
Thank you, Polly, thank you, Bryce Wilson.
I'll turn it back over to you.
Well, and you probably didn't need to, because I'm going to say that concludes my report.
That was actually the sentence I was waiting for. We do not have a president's report, much to everyone's relief this month. So we will move to public comment. Just give you a little heads up. As we move to our public comment period, this period may be available to any person who wishes to address the board on any matter appearing on the agenda. Up to 90 minutes will be allowed for the public comment period. A majority of board members present and voting may take action to extend the total amount of time allowed for public comment period. A majority of members present and voting may also take action to allow or terminate public comment at any time during the meeting. If you are not signed in and wish to speak, please sign in at this time. Those wishing to speak must be signed in at the table outside the meeting room. Each individual speaking to the board will be required to complete a signing card for identification of oneself. Individuals are required to include on the signing card their name, address, Individuals are required to include on the signing card their name, address, and name of any organization represented. Individuals may be prohibited to speak in public, comment if the signing card does not include the required information. Persons speaking to the board during public comment should state their name, city, and state at the beginning of their allotted time, and may submit printed materials for the board, but may not use any other form of media. Anyone refusing to be identified will be prohibited from speaking. Each person may address the board for up to five minutes. A majority of members present and voting may take action to reduce or extend the amount of time individual, of amount of individual time allotted to all speakers. If at any time persons appearing before the board exceed the time limitations set forth in this policy or on the agenda, or become abusive or threatening in language or behavior, it shall be the responsibility of the president to refuse permission to continue to address the board. We have three public comment cards submitted, and Vice President Neary will announce the names of the first speakers. Please come forward to the front row of seat, of chairs.
So if the three speakers could come forward, and we'll start with Teresa Franks, if you want to come forward to the podium. Thank you, Teresa.
Good morning. My name is Teresa Franks. I'm a reading interventionist in Omaha Public Schools, an adjunct professor at UNO, and I'm president of the Nebraska Dyslexia Association. I'm a certified academic language therapist and a certified structured literacy dyslexia specialist, among other credentials. We just heard about Nebraska's performance on the 2024 NAEP reading scores, and it was troubling. Seventy-two percent of Nebraskan fourth graders are not proficient readers. And most alarmingly, student performance is on a downward trend. States all across the country are experiencing the same sobering reality. We know that reading success is positively correlated with greater health, wealth, and life satisfaction, and that reading success can be a protective factor for our most vulnerable kids. We know the stakes are high, so what do we do? Let's look to Mississippi. When I was a teacher in Tennessee, we used to say, "Thank God for Mississippi, we'll never be last." But my friends in Tennessee can't say that anymore. In the last 12 years, Mississippi's students, fourth graders, have moved from the 49th to the ninth rank in the country in reading, as measured by fourth grade NAEP scores. When looking at students in poverty, Mississippi students are number one. For black students, they're number three, and they are tied for number one for Hispanic students. They are closing those stubborn historical achievement gaps despite having the highest poverty and the most under-resourced schools in the country. You may have read about this phenomenal growth. The media loves an alliteration, so they call it the Mississippi miracle. But for those of us who were there, and I taught in Mississippi public schools as well, we know it was no miracle. We call it the Mississippi marathon. What you may not know is that, sorry, Mississippi's phenomenal growth is connected to dyslexia, and how that connection has been overlooked when other states have attempted to replicate Mississippi's success. As we look to implement the Nebraska Literacy Plan, you will see many of the same elements that we share with Mississippi. But I'm gonna share with you today, so the crucial differences that have led to Mississippi's dramatic literacy achievements. Mississippi enacted one of the first dyslexia laws in the country, spurred by a dyslexic state legislator. In coordination with philanthropic partner Barksdale Institute and other literacy advocates and officials, Mississippi transformed their colleges of education to reflect the evidence base known as the science of reading. They required all primary teachers in the state to be trained in the science of reading, and made the training free and available to any interested educator in any grade or subject. Later, they strategically deployed highly-trained and credentialed reading coaches across the state using database decision rules. Even before the term structured literacy was coined by the, excuse me, by the International Dyslexia Association in 2014, Mississippi Department of Education leaders knew that teacher training was the key. If students had access to a teacher who was a certified expert in reading, with both the knowledge and the skills to teach all students to read, student success would follow. They looked for those educators trained in programs specifically designed for dyslexic children. Orton Gillingham, Wilson, Slingerland, DeBart, and others now all under the umbrella of structured literacy. This specialized training had been difficult to access and expensive to complete, but Mississippi removed the barriers and set up some incentives. They trained their teachers to the same high standards and credentials as dyslexia specialists, using the letters program at first, but now using Ames Pathway to incorporate what they realized was lacking in letters, which was that supervised practicum experience and certification. The state offers an annual $6,000 stipend for educator who's earned the Certified Academic Language Therapist or COWT credential. Becoming a COWT requires 100 hours of instruction, passing a knowledge exam, and 700 supervised practicum hours. As a result, Mississippi has the highest number of COWTs in the nation. Now, they have a sustainable network of certified literacy, structured literacy experts in their classroom teachers and their literacy coaches, and they're building out their own training programs. We can do this in Nebraska. We can learn from Mississippi's success and from the failure of other states whose implementation has lacked cohesion or commitment. We must do this so that all Nebraskan children can read. Thank you.
Thank you. Joe Goddard, will you please come forward?
Does the timer start, or do I just go? All right. I'm, I'm Joe Goddard from Lincoln. I'm here as a parent of children who have attended private and public schools in Lincoln. I'm on the recently formed NDE Family Literacy Advisory Committee, and I serve as the Vice President of the Nebraska Dyslexia Association, where, I mean, every day we get outreach from parents, we hear from them, and they're desperate for help, for helping their, their children read in school systems that just aren't there yet. You heard a lot from Teresa about how looking at, at reading can, can help Mississippi and how it can help here. So I want to share a little bit more about dyslexia, how common it is, what it is, impacts on literacy, where we stand, and I think how fixing the system for our dyslexic students in Nebraska can fix it for all students. And I, I think that is really because the best reading instruction for students with dyslexia is also the best reading instruction for all children. And so let's start with a little bit about dyslexia. It's really, it's more common than you think, more, more common than people know. It's one in five students, it's 20% of students. In Nebraska, that's 73,000 K-12 students have dyslexia. But we don't currently identify those students in Nebraska, so they're, they're out there unknown. A lot of teachers have said they've never taught a student with dyslexia. Dyslexia is neurobiological learning difference, it's brain-based, it affects reading, spelling, and writing, and it's classified as a specific learning disability. People with dyslexia process language differently. So when we talk about the science of reading, unlike speech, which our brains are naturally wired to learn, you can just be around people talking, and you kind of learn to talk. Writing doesn't work that way. I mean, reading doesn't work that way. It requires forming entirely new neural connections that our brain aren't born with. For most, for most children, that process happens over several years of quality education and instruction. Dyslexia impacts the formation of those neural connections and relies on alternative, slower processing areas of the brain for reading. So for students who don't receive that high-quality explicit evidence-based reading instruction, especially those with dyslexia, they continue to struggle to decode words, and that leads to frustration and academic failure. And the consequences of this are really severe without early identification, proper intervention. Children with dyslexia face an increased risk of low self-esteem, anxiety, depression, absenteeism, and dropping out. And really shockingly, 50% of incarcerated juveniles and adults have dyslexia. It's important to know that dyslexia is not about intelligence, it's not laziness or lack of effort, it's not about reversing letters, it's not related division problems, it can't be outgrown. But with early identification and proper instruction, students with dyslexia can and do become strong readers. So I want to talk a little bit about what Nebraska has done. We've done some really cool things on paper. In 2017, Nebraska defined dyslexia in state law and established a dyslexia technical guide. But a lot of schools still believe they can't say dyslexia, and they don't think they can identify students with dyslexia. In 2018, we implemented a law requiring evidence-based structured literacy instruction with fidelity for all children exhibiting signs of dyslexia. They didn't have to have a medical diagnosis, they just had to be exhibiting signs. Yet, there's no oversight, no accountability, and little implementation of this. Schools continue to use ineffective reading interventions, often delivered by folks with minimal training. And in 2023, just recently, a law was put in place that mandated districts report data on dyslexia and other learning disabilities. In its first year, the data collected was pretty useless. I think as a board, you've probably maybe discussed that. But schools reported they had no reliable way to identify or track these students. And Nebraska has universal screening for reading, which is awesome, but it's kind of optional, and most schools don't do dyslexia risk screening, which should also be implemented. So what needs to be done? What could be included in the literacy project plan, or what could we do otherwise? We can implement universal earlier dyslexia screening in all schools to identify the risk. We can ensure that IEP goals and reading interventions are provided by trained, certified dyslexia specialists, and we could hold schools accountable to the existing laws. So in closing, we just, what we can't do is we can't wait another, while another generation of Nebraska students struggles with a problem we already know how to solve. We just simply don't have a knowledge gap, we've got an action gap. So please take action. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Appreciate it. Nancy, could you please come forward? Thank you.
I'm Nancy Packard. Let's see, am I to say my address? Lincoln, Nebraska. I retired about 21 years ago from teaching. My last experience was third grade. When I retired, I said teaching was the most important and the hardest job in the world. And today, I say teaching is twice as important and twice as hard. I want, my question is, is there a comparison of the NAEP score to library book reading, checking out? As I gained confidence as a teacher, and as my school was about three blocks from the public library, my reading program was to walk my kids to the library and check out their own books. And I had to, of course, develop stuff so that I made sure they were getting whatever they needed in the way of reading. In the process of doing that, I decided it, I had to rethink. The reason to be a reader is not so we can read Shakespeare, but so we can read whatever we need to read, be that a car manual, or a cookbook, or a joke book. I don't remember. We weren't taking those related assessments in those days. I don't know that my, my students, you know, got higher grades in reading, but I did help them, I think, to become people who were not afraid to go to the library. For instance, I told them one of the places, one of the two places you could go and you would always be welcomed and unafraid was a church and a library. So I want to just say, I, I have recently become aware of the science of reading, and I appreciate any scientific approaches and help we can have. But the bottom line is, when you get out of school, are you gonna read? Will you like it? Will you find what you need? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you to all of our people who offered public testimony today. There is no written public comment for this month. The board will take a 15-minute break from now until 10:30. I guess that's more than 50. Depends on which clock you're looking at. I'm going, going with the one at the back of the room, so we'll take a quick break. Thank you.[1462.41] The board meeting will resume shortly. If board members could resume their seats. Okay, if board members can resume their seats, we will reconvene. Okay, we are in agenda item six. Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda? I move to adopt the consent agenda?
Seconded.
It is moved and seconded to adopt the consent agenda. Per board policy, there is no discussion on the motion to adopt the consent agenda. Would the recording secretary please call the roll?
Schoenhoff.
President.
Yes. Neary.
Yes.
Christensen.
Yes.
Renner.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Douglas.
Yes.
Penner.
Yes.
Teckmeyer.
Yes.
Eight yes.
The affirmative has it, and the consent agenda is adopted. The next item in business are the reports of the standing committees. I will report on behalf of the executive committee. The executive committee reports on its February 6, 2025, meeting. Members present were Chair Elizabeth Teckmeyer, Vice Chair Deborah Neary, Sheri Jones, and Liz Renner. The committee reviewed proposed legislation that is scheduled for hearings next week and advised the commissioner on the NDE positions of legislative bills. The committee continues to meet weekly through the legislative session to advise the commissioner on legislative matters. The committee reviewed four information items. The first item reviewed was the 2025-2027 NDE Nebraska Association of Public Employees bargaining agreement and discussed its content and changes. This item appears on the consent agenda for approval. Related, the committee was informed on the upcoming revision process for the NDE personnel rules, which apply to employees who are not subject to the bargaining agreement. Revisions to the personnel rules will be brought forward to the board for approval in the coming months. Next, the committee reviewed and discussed a plan for the development and implementation of a new strategic plan. The committee recommends a work session in March to begin board discussions on the strategic planning process. Finally, information was shared on a proposal for the Comprehensive Literacy State Development Grant subawards. This includes the executive committee report. Elizabeth Teckmeyer, Chair. Are there any questions on the executive committee report? Agenda item 7.1, 2025 proposed state legislation. Board members, are there any questions or discussion on this item? And as always, members who are not on the executive committee, you can find the weekly updates, usually by Friday afternoon, as to what the committee has recommended. Agenda item 7.2, Chair Christensen will report on behalf of the Budget and Finance Committee meeting.
The Budget and Finance Committee reports that at its Thursday, February 6, meeting, members were present were Kristin Christensen, Maggie Douglas, Lisa Schoenhoff, and Kirk Penner. The committee reviewed three action items. The first item was to amend the previously adopted motion to accept the Comprehensive Literacy State Development Grant funds. The committee recommends the board's adoption of the proposed amendment. The committee then reviewed the funding recommendations for school districts and ESUs to deliver mental health training for staff. No committee recommendation was established. The last action item reviewed was a contract for training related to the Computer Science and Technology Expansion Program. The committee recommends the board's approval of this item. The committee reviewed the monthly board travel expenses, noting no concerns. Last, the committee reviewed seven information items, including the following: a potential contract for an individual to provide FFA content support, possible acceptance of funds to support the Stronger Connection Technical Assistance and Capacity Building Program, a grant to support the expansion of the Farm-to-School Program, information on the allocation of 21st Century Funds, a review of the procurement for an evaluation of the Comprehensive Literacy Statewide Development Grant, the replacement of the department's current survey and data collection tool, and the quarterly budget review. This concludes the Budget and Finance Committee report. Kristin Christensen, Chair.
Are there any questions on the report? Okay, seeing none. Item 7.2B. The committee recommends adoption. And I will read the motion. The motion? Oh, actually, I need someone to make.
Madam President, so the motion was made at the last meeting.
Right.
It was referred to the committee. Now it's back on the floor.
Okay, so we don't need to read it. Okay. Sure. Okay, so the motion was made at our last board meeting. It was referred back to the Budget Committee, as you all remember. And so I'll just read what the motion is. The motion is to amend the previously adopted motion to accept the Comprehensive Literacy State Development Grant funds and authorize the commissioner to enter into contracts and subawards to carry out grant activities by striking this section, and authorize the commissioner to enter into contracts and subawards and to carry out grant activities. So the motion, if amended, would read to accept the Comprehensive Literacy State Development Grant funds. Is there any discussion on the motion? All right, I guess the committee hashed it out, which is lovely. That's the point of our committees. So I will reread the motion again. The motion is to amend the previously adopted motion to accept the Comprehensive Literacy State Development Grant funds and authorize the commissioner to enter into contracts and subawards to carry out grant activities by striking and authorize the commissioner to enter into contracts and subawards and to carry out grant activities. So the motion, if amended, would read to accept the Comprehensive Literacy State Development Grant funds. Would the recording secretary please call the roll?
Christensen.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Renner.
Yes.
Douglas.
Yes.
Schoenhoff.
Yes.
Teckmeyer.
Yes.
Penner.
Yes.
Eight yes.
The affirmative has it, and the motion is amended to read to accept the Comprehensive Literacy State Development Grant funds. Is there a motion on item 7.2.0C?
Yes, I move to authorize the commissioner to approve funding recommendations for school districts and educational service units to support schools in delivering mental health training for staff.
Is moved and seconded to authorize the commissioner to approve funding recommendations for school districts and educational service units to support schools in delivering mental health training for staff. Is there any discussion on the motion? Sheri?
Yes, I do have a comment I would like to make. Because a number of schools in District 6 applied for this grant, I feel compelled to comment. I believe it is important to support the mental health of both students and staff. The evidence seems to indicate that what we've been doing over the past five years or so is lacking in effectiveness. This mental health first aid provides more of the same, I believe. There are school districts in our state that are doing mental health differently and have amazing data to validate what they are doing. I believe it's time to do things differently.
Any other comments? Lisa?
I would like to see clear parameters put in place that ensure that we are training teachers on an opt-in versus an opt-out program, and that there's very clear parameters around transparency with parents.
And, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Go ahead, thanks, Depp.
Go ahead, thanks, Deb. So, I'm on the same page where we need to, we don't have anything on the books here at the State Board, NDE, about mental health. It's a wide swath, and I think we need to have some guardrails of what's allowed and what's not allowed. Very, this grant, very vague, somewhat. It's left up to the public schools, which I appreciate because it's local control, but there's some things in this area that probably need to be discussed before I adopt or approve any, not even any mental health-type situation, anyone. We need to have some guardrails.
Deborah?
So I wasn't in that committee, so I don't know what the discussion was, but just hearing the comments right now, I have a concern that we have a partisan divide, and we're going to end up in a 4-4 vote, and that we're going to be dismantling an important program that needs funding, because we don't, we're not saying, here's what we recommend. We're saying, we're not going to fund these mental health supports. And so I'd like to just hear from those people what they're recommending, instead of just obstructing something. Like, what are they recommending? This, from my understanding, is a mandate given to us by the legislature that we have to do, and we have to do it in the way they've established. And so what steps have we taken as a committee, instead of just voting this down, what steps, proactive leadership-type of steps have we taken in order to ensure that we're not just dismantling something, and instead that we are replacing it with something that is going to help our students? Because honestly, the mental health of our students is something that, I mean, we've all heard the research since 2012, like, it is scary. And then our pandemic exacerbated things even more. And while I understand we don't want to maintain the status quo if it's not working, but I haven't seen research that it's not working. I've seen research that mental health problems are continuing, but I haven't seen that it's related to the fact that our interventions aren't working. So I guess, where is that information, and can we have that discussion, instead of quietly hiding behind a vote? Like, I feel like this requires a discussion if we're going to vote it down.
Yeah, I think we need guardrails. How many schools were involved? Seven? Seven schools? Seven schools? Seven districts?
Right, saying we need guardrails isn't an answer. That's a political talking point. I'm hoping for information about what guardrails you want, what proactive steps you're taking.
We're going to look at this for a long time. A long time. There's good mental health, and there's bad mental health. And I don't, I don't have to give you reasons or anything. My vote is no, until we get it figured out. There is no policy on the books at NDE. None. There's nothing. I'm done.
Okay. All right, I'm going to go to Lisa, and then back to Deb.
I think you bring up a great point, that it has to be data-driven, and the data that we requested was, in the meeting, was regarding what significant, if there, has there been any significant improvements as a result of the second step that's been purchased across our state with Esser funds, and how that has impacted student referrals, and behaviors, and mental health. And so, moving forward, I think it is a great idea to look at some data as well.
And tell me what data you think you're going to collect in order to know if mental health intervention, prevention strategies are working in an era in our world when mental health problems with students are just escalating at unusual rates. What kind of data are we looking for?
You know, I don't, we can go through all kinds of scientific data and that type of things. The same type of data, and the best practices, and the experts that told us to get rid of the constructive response in our assessments. So they're not always right. Experts are always wrong, and so we're going to take time to look at it. That's what you're going to get.
What are you going to look at, Kirk? I'd just like to know what you're going to look at. Like, how are you going to measure this? Like, this is a political talking point. We need to be using real language that talks about what are the mental health outcomes that you're specifically looking for, because you're going to be hurting a lot of students by turning down this funding. What are you looking for? And please don't use any more political talking points.
Yeah, I'm done.
I actually have a question. I was bouncing off of your idea. I was saying your idea was a great idea. What is the research that you're looking for? Because that's actually one of the things that I had asked in our meeting yesterday, is what is the data that shows that this is having a significant impact? What are your ideas, Deborah?
So I'm not questioning it. You're the one that's questioning it and asking for outcomes. So I would assume that as a leader, you would have an idea of what you wanted to measure. I'm not looking for outcomes. I know we have a mental health problem with the students in our state. I know that we have trusted professionals at leadership levels in our mental health staff and therapists. Like, I'm not, I'm not questioning that what is happening is a problem. I'm saying to take it away is a huge, huge problem, and students are going to be hurt. Until you have an answer for how you're going to come up with a plan for improving this, like, let's just say, let's approve it today and say you're going to take it back to your committee and come up with something that is a proactive, positive plan, rather than just dismantling something and hurting thousands of students across the state that need this. I come from a place where I've had eight foster kids. I will tell you, these mental health supports are necessary, not just for special needs audiences like I have helped raise, but for all of our kids today. How can we not see that? Here we are, supporting cellphone issues in our schools because of the mental health problems they're causing, but we want to take away any supports that are available to our students. You're making this a partisan talking point. You're not turning this into a positive step that we can do to help our students, and to just dismantle something because it feels good, because it's going to give you props within your political party is not something that is appropriate for a leader in Nebraska.
Okay, I'm going to go to now, if there's anybody else who hasn't commented and would like to comment. I do want to just bring the temperature down here just a bit in the room. Yeah, Liz?
I just have a question for a staff member, if I could, for Zainab, if she's here.
Yes. Dr. Rita, can you come to the table? Thank you.
Good morning, Zainab Rita, Student Service Officer.
Hi, thank you. I just have a question about the statute that this is mandated from. Was there a timeline in which we had to disperse these funds? Is there, like, an end date where it has to be dispersed by this time?
It has to be done by this year.
Okay, so by this coming school year, like, fall of 2025, we have to have the funds out, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so we're kind of on a timeline so that we stay in compliance with the statute? Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Okay, Liz?
Yeah, I guess I understand the concerns that there should be guardrails and data, and maybe there are alternative approaches. But I guess where I'm coming from is I don't see this, we can always improve, but we're not doing harm, and in fact, we are doing good. Maybe we're not doing as much good as we could, and I would certainly support further research, and I would like to know what the guardrails are that you think are so critical. So I guess I'm just, I would ask those that are in opposition to think about the kids that won't receive the help they need, and it may not be perfect help, but we do the best we can with what we know and the resources that we have. So I guess that's, that is my request.
The question has been called. Is there a second? All those in favor of ending debate, the recorded secretary will call the roll.
Schoenhoff?
Yes.
Penner?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Renner?
No.
Douglas?
No.
Neary?
No.
Teckmeyer?
Yes.
Christensen?
No.
Or yes, or no?
Okay, so debate is, the motion failed, debate is, or discussion is, it's not a debate. This is a discussion. And we will go to people who haven't spoke. I will say that in my time on the board, I have never experienced a time when people have to justify their vote to fellow board members. We are each independently elected by the constituents in our area and must answer to them. So I'm a little surprised at the vein of this conversation. So I do want to open the floor to members who haven't had an opportunity, and I believe that's Maggie. And Kristen, you only had one question?
I guess what my thinking is, yesterday I was kind of confused when we were in committee about if we were talking about what the mental health supports were going to be versus just the grant. So when I realized that the legislature mandated us to approve the grant, right, that this isn't a question, that's where I'm getting kind of confused on this discussion still.
You don't have to add anymore. I just want to give you floor space to do. Okay, all right. Yes, Deb?
So, in any policy leadership position, you have accountability back to the citizens of the state. Every state senator who introduces a bill has to repeatedly defend what they're doing. We are no different. And so for four people to say they don't want to continue discussion, they just want to dismantle something, that doesn't feel like they're doing it for reasons that they want to be transparent about. If you can't defend publicly what you're going to do, then why are you doing it? Like, just to say, I want guardrails, as I already said, is a partisan talking point. But to say, these are some ideas I'm going to bring to the committee next month, and I'd like these to be considered, like, if that's what your plan is, Sheri, like, I'm all for that, but that's not what I'm hearing. Instead, you just wanted to shut down conversation. Lisa, do you have an idea that you're going to bring forward to the committee? And can I, are you going to give us a taste of it right now? Or do you want to wait till next month when you're better prepared?
I can, I'm happy to talk now.
Okay, something that is going to support the mental health of our, thank you.
I don't mean to call anyone else, but I have been in conversations, so I don't know that I want to speak to the specific program, but there is a program in our state that is making a lot of headway, and they have the data to prove it. And so it's in the works. I've been in conversations with people. And I also had mentioned earlier that the parameters for me that I feel are important is that it's opt-in versus opt-out, and that we have parameters around ensuring that parents are notified.
So would you happen to know if that plan aligns with what we are legally required to do with this funding? Has there been any research about that?
Yes, it's basically, it's an alternative to the mental health first aid.
Okay. I look forward to hearing about it, if you guys are going to vote this down. Thank you. Elizabeth, do you have a plan?
My?
Have you thought about why you're doing, why you're going to vote it down?
Did I say I was voting it down?
Well, we know. I'm just wondering, if you vote it down, are you going to speak up and say, why? Or are you just going to hide behind the fact that you have never seen anyone have to defend their decision? I've seen the votes on this board too many times quietly happen, where you just quietly turn, vote against science standards, vote against important things. You have an obligation, not just to the constituents, but to all of us. We're all trying to do our best to come up with solutions that are going to help the students of Nebraska. You have a responsibility to have a conversation with us, not just to quietly play partisan games.
Okay, well, all right, so I am going to, as the president, see if there's anyone else who wants to comment. I'm keeping track so that we have a fair discussion, that everybody gets time to comment. I do think that this conversation, and the reason I voted to end debate, is because it's become very hostile, and people are pointing and raising voices, and that is not appropriate in the boardroom. That's why I voted to end discussion. Would anyone else like to speak to this?
I'm going to just create a fact, since you're big into facts, that this is, that could be the verse 4-4 vote besides voting for president, and every board I've been on with you, it's been your political party that's been in the majority. So don't throw that at us. One board meeting, one vote.
Okay. All right, anyone else want to comment at this time?
Yes, I do.
Deb, I can't keep coming back to you.
Well, I'm, I'm sorry. I'm a board member who has a right to have a speak, so unless...
And we have a policy to go around twice to all board members.
All right, then you can come back to me if anyone wants to speak.
Kristen?
Could I ask Lisa a question?
Yes.
Could you tell me a little bit more about the opt-in, and how that might be feasible for, say, like, social skills instruction in the classroom, things like that, please?
Yes. And so if there's, for example, a screener that happens to determine if there's mental health needs in the school, it needs to be something that we're opting into as parents, not opting out. So I'm definitely behind supporting the parents in my district, because I know that it's very important to my constituents to have somebody that advocates for parental rights. And so we need to make sure that we aren't stepping on their toes, and so if there's a screener, they need to have full transparency, that their kids are being screened, and know what's on the screener.
Can I ask a follow-up question?
Sure.
So this particular item pertains to professional development and training for teachers, not mental health supports that we are using to screen students, but this particular thing is that we are funding training for teachers. So I'm just, I'm failing to see the connection, though I understand what you're saying, failing to see how this opt-in strategy relates to the issue at hand.
Thank you for your question. Correct me if I'm wrong, I believe it's Mental Health First Aid, and they do a universal screener. And so if that's what we're going to be training our teachers on, I think that we need to look at, if we're going to, if we're going to use that, we need to make sure that those parameters are in place, unless we go with a different program.
I, from what I understood in committee yesterday, it was up to the school district to decide what they were using, that we weren't mandating a particular training, but that they, it was the local control, and they were given the funds to then decide how to use them for their particular training, was my understanding. But I could be, I could be off-base on that.
Thank you. All right, as, as is my... All right, as, as is my typical process in committee, as well as on the board, I usually try to give everybody a chance to speak first. So, I have concerns about this, I have, had requested a copy of the, the application, and one thing that concerns me greatly is that this is a program for teacher training, and it says that it focuses on the participants' awareness of available mental health resources within the community, enabling them to connect students with appropriate care effectively, and that should really go through the parents first. I send my students to school to learn reading and math, and I would like to be included in any sort of conversations. I don't see any mention of that, and so that is a very big concern to me. I think that this gives us the opportunity to work together, to come up with something that will enhance the mental health of our students, and so I look forward to future discussions, hearing from committee members on what they would like to propose for that. That's my thoughts. Deb?
So when I hear us talk about the parent discussion, and I certainly am somebody that believes in parent involvement in these things, but I also want to just give an example, as a, as a someone who's been a foster care parent for eight children, why I think that we do need to give students an opportunity to go talk to counselors that can help them, even if they can't go to their parent first. I had a young boy that lived with me for five years, and then when his sister, who had been bounced around to seven foster homes, needed a place to live, we took her in. So, when she came into our house, she started being sexually abused by her brother, who had been living with me for five years. She did not feel like she could come to me, because she was new to our home and was afraid. So if it weren't for the counselors at school, she would have had nobody to talk to. I mean, this is one example, and there are millions of examples of kids that might be afraid to go to their parents and say they need, they need something, and we do need to give those students support, and this, as I said, this is one example. I think that we are running into the situation where we think we're the experts and we know better. I mean, we have thousands of mental health workers in this state who are trained in these skills, and why do we think that we know better than them about what's needed? Unless you really believe that they're trying to brainwash your children. If that's your fear, then let's talk about that. But I really believe the mental health counselors in our state and the social workers want to do what's best, and are trained to do what's best, and is there the rare example of somebody who is misguided? Of course, that's all.
Yes, sorry. I just want to get back to the part about us remaining in compliance with the legislative directive to address this, and I don't know if there's someone that can explain what the process is. If this gets stalled out today by a 4-4 vote, what happens next, and what are the repercussions if we aren't in compliance?
I think that's a great question. I don't know what the repercussions are, but I would like to speak to us not abiding by state statute. In effective July 1, 2019, all of the educator prep programs approved by this board were supposed to be in compliance with state statute, which we were the leveraging device. We were supposed to ensure that this happened, and it's, it hasn't been happening for almost six years. And so, you know, I feel like there's a lot of areas, and I don't mean to muddy the waters, but to try and, to try and force a vote on people based on state statute is disingenuous. You know, we've got kids who can't read because of dyslexia, the dyslexia law, we were not enforcing it, and we were the enforcement mechanism, and so I, I understand that. As far as I know, there's not, I'm not hearing a push from our board members to say, "Never, no mental health." What I'm hearing is, can we go back to the drawing board? Can we, can we have this conversation? I do want to address Liz's question, though. Commissioner, do you know about the, the financial aspect of it?
A little bit, I do. The, first of all, not expending, the legislature took action to appropriate the funds, they didn't compel us to spend those funds. The period of time that we have to spend those funds is defined, so you wouldn't be out of compliance by not spending those funds. You do still have time to come up with an alternative plan, if that would be the wishes of the board, but in terms of being out of compliance with state statute, you, you wouldn't be.
Deb?
I just want to point out, there's a difference between not enforcing something, because we're not an enforcement agency, and obstructing something, and that's the difference in the discussion here, and so I, I just want to make sure that we've clarified that.
I think not following the letter of the law, I mean, if we're going to throw that up, then, I mean, there's, there's examples, so. Is there anyone else who hasn't spoken that would like to, kind of keeping tally marks to make sure everybody has open space to speak? Okay, seeing no further comments, the motion is to authorize the commissioner to approve funding recommendations for school districts and educational service units to support schools in delivering mental health training for staff. Would the recording secretary please call the roll?
Jones?
No.
Neary?
Yes.
Renner?
Yes.
Douglas?
Yes.
Penner?
No.
Christensen?
Yes.
Schoenhoff?
No.
Tegmeyer?
No.
For yes, for no.
The vote was tied, and the motion has failed. Is there a motion on item 7.2. D?
I move to authorize the commissioner to contract for the Computer Science and Technology Education Fund Training and Support Expansion Program.
Second.
It is moved and seconded to authorize the commissioner to contract for the Computer Science and Technology Education Fund Training and Support Expansion Program. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, the motion is to authorize the commissioner to contract for the Computer Science and Technology Education Fund Training and Support Expansion Program. Would the recording secretary please call the roll?
Douglas?
Yes.
Penner?
Yes.
Tegmeyer?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Renner?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Schoenhoff?
Yes.
Eight yes.
The affirmative has it, and the motion to authorize the commissioner to contract for the Computer Science and Technology Education Fund Training and Support Expansion Program is adopted. Item 7.3, Chair Lisa Schoenhoff will report on behalf of the Planning and Evaluation Yesterday, February 6, 2024, the Planning and Evaluation Committee reports on their committee meeting. The members present were Lisa Schoenhoff, Sheri Jones, Deborah Neary, and Kristin Christensen. The committee reviewed an action item related to the Nebraska Literacy Project Plan. NDE staff provided information on revisions made and answered questions related to statutory requirements. The committee reviewed discussion items with NDE staff, providing summaries and answering the questions related to media specialist requirements, waiver requests, Rule 11 teacher waiver request, pilot processes for clinical observations of speech-language pathology and school psychology candidates, the NCTE organizational policies. The committee reviewed informational items related to pilot processes for cooperating teachers of world languages, approval of plans of correction, approval of non-public and interim program schools, model behavioral intervention policy for schools, and a statewide learning platform program. NDE staff will bring these items to a future meeting for discussion and subsequent approval. This concludes the planning and evaluation report. Thank you. Are there any questions on the Planning and Evaluation Committee report? Is there a motion on item 7.3. A?
Yes, I move to approve the Nebraska Literacy Project Plan.
Is moved and seconded to approve the Nebraska Literacy Project Plan. Is there any discussion on this motion? None? Okay, oh, Lisa, is that okay?
I am super passionate about literacy, so this is something that I have been pouring my heart and soul into for the past 24 years, and I am very grateful to the NDE staff for all the hard work that they've done and the conversations that we've had. There have been great, there's been great progress in beginning to incorporate phonics and structured literacy back into the, into our classrooms, and I think that that's imperative. I do believe there are still some areas that need worked on. A couple of the areas that I have been in conversations about are the evidence-based materials that are called high-quality instructional materials, and the reason why that has been a concern of mine that I've already discussed with several people is because when you look at our, our scores, nationwide scores and Nebraska scores, my concern is that if we are using high-quality instructional materials in our classrooms, that are not getting our kids reading real books a lot, they have to be reading real books at their levels, they need to be doing, at their instructional level, they need to be doing a lot of writing at their instructional level, and there was an ORACY piece that I actually just noticed last night was taken out, so with our demographics, I know this was brought up earlier as well, we've got to include language acquisition, which is good for all kids regardless of what demographic you come from. There's just some, there's just some areas that I think that we need to continue our work on before I would feel comfortable with knowing that our kids are going to be able to be where they need to be moving forward, and I really look forward to doing that work with all of you.
Thank you, Lisa. Anyone else?
I'm curious, Lisa, if this is, your concerns could be something that can continue on past the approval of this plan. I hate to see it obstructed or, or stopped. There's an entire Department of Education, school districts across the state, and students that would benefit from this moving forward, but I respect your, your detailed concern, and I'm just wondering if your conversations with the staff have proven to you that they are open to continuing that conversation with the approval of the plan?
I actually had talked to Dr. Maher about that, and regardless of how I vote today, it doesn't sound like it'll have a great impact on what happens with the NDE staff going forward. The fact of the matter is, is that with my experience and my background in literacy, if I voted yes today on something that I didn't think was prepared to get us the growth we need across our state, I would be doing our state a disservice, and in my conscience, I cannot vote based on that fact.
Before we vote, I just want to say that I know a lot of time and energy, resources have gone into this plan, and I appreciate our staff, and I appreciate the receptiveness of Allison and her team and the hard work. I know we all want to see kids read, so I, that's my comment, I just want to say thanks. Right, so the motion is to approve the Nebraska Literacy Project Plan. Would the recording secretary please call the roll?
Tegmeyer?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Penner?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Renner?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Schoenhoff?
No.
Douglas?
Yes.
Seven yes, one no.
The affirmative has it, and the motion to approve the Nebraska Literacy Project Plan is adopted. The next few agenda items are discussion items, and so we have item 7.3. B, this is a waiver request from the Nebraska Correctional Youth Facility regarding media specialist requirements. Are there any questions or discussion on this item? Item 7.3. C, this is Rule 11 teacher waiver request from Schuyler Public Schools. Board members, are there any questions on this item? I just want to, to just kind of help people who aren't on the Rules Committee know, we, we had a really great meeting yesterday, and Rule 11 deals with, with preschool, early childhood education, and so we're actually looking at that rule to see how we can best serve the students who are going to our early childhood programs, and, and the teachers and staff who lead them, and so while it's not specific to Schuyler, I just think that, that we are going to be looking at that and hope to bring some more information to the full board at some point on Rule 11. Okay, agenda item 7.3. D, this is a pilot process for conducting clinical observations for speech-language pathology virtually at the University of Nebraska Carney. Board members, are there any questions or discussion on this item? And I would actually like to, can I couple it? Does anyone oppose? I mean, we can, we can do them separately, but also there's another, the very next one is for conducting clinical observations for school psychology. So we have speech-language pathology virtually and school psychology virtually, they're very similar, and they're both at the University of Nebraska Carney. Any discussion on 7.3. D or 7.3. E?
Yes, may I just make a point that we did pass a similar pilot program process in the past for the Masters in Counseling Program. So we did have a bit of discussion during that time several months ago, so I think Jim did a great job of giving us information at that time. The only recommendation I gave to Mr. Kent yesterday was that the student evaluation, I believe, needs to be, the format needs to be looked at, and I, and I believe he's willing to take that back to the colleges, so I appreciate that.
I'm excited to see our teachers' colleges using the technology. Rural areas are tricky, and getting someone in to, to do those observations of your work is, is not always easy, not always cost-effective. always cost-effective. And so, this option is great, and I hope that we can see more people going into these fields because it's cutting some of that red tape. Okay, we have another discussion item in this agenda, and it is 7.3. F. Discuss the NCTE organizational policies. Board members, are there any questions or discussion on this item? Kirk?
I would just like to know the discussion. What was the?
Oh, okay. So, so, so I'm getting a request from members who are not on the Planning and Evaluation Committee to say, hey, what's going on? So, all right. Sheri, I see your lights on.
Okay. This will probably take me about 10 minutes, so I don't know, or I anticipate that. So I don't know if you want me to do that now or after lunch break. Is there a preference? When do we break for lunch?
Preferences that we continue on.
Okay. So I will go ahead and share.
Commissioner just said his stomach hasn't growled yet, so we're good.
So I will go ahead and share what I shared with the committee yesterday. So I'm going to begin by giving some background information for the sake of our new board members, as well as those tuning in to our meeting. According to Board Operating Procedure 1.09, or Board Operating Policy, excuse me, quote, "Every two years, the board shall review the role, functions, and responsibilities of task forces and advisory committees or councils established by the board." And I'll end my quote, although the sentence continues. "The Nebraska Council of Teacher Education," I'll now refer to as NCTE from here on, "is a council established by the board. According to NDE staff, the last time the board did a review of the NCTE was in 2021, four years ago. And so thus, a review is overdue and warranted. Last September, as Chair of the Planning and Evaluation Committee, I placed this item on the Planning and Evaluation Agenda as an informational item, and then proposed a tentative timeline for the review. Prior to the October board meeting, committee members were encouraged to read the documents, which I know are not on there for this board, but they will be on there. There's two documents that you will see before our next meeting." And in October, I met with Dr. Skretta, the current Executive Director of NCTE, and NDE staff to gather information. And I did supply our committee yesterday with some of the questions that I asked, although I did not have time during that hour meeting to have all of my questions addressed. But I appreciated Dr. Skretta's willingness to meet, and she mentioned that she would be willing to meet at a later date with the full board. So I appreciate that as well. So there's a couple things I proposed. First of all, I think, and this is just minor, but that the Membership Directory document could use some minor tweaks to provide for more, for better clarity, in my opinion, particularly the listing of the three subgroups within the Membership Directory, which would be higher education, school governance, and teachers. And each of those subgroups provides 16 members to this council, so it is a 48-member council, for your information. Okay, the change I propose is in the selection process of the teacher membership. Currently, there are two State Board of Education-appointed teachers, although I believe historically the Nebraska Department of Education staff has done the actual selecting with the board giving approval. And the other 14, the other 14 teachers are from the Nebraska State Education Association. I would like to see all teachers in the state be given the opportunity to apply, and I'll give some rationale in a minute. My proposal is to have two representatives selected from each of the eight State Board of Education districts, which would provide the 16 members' count that is now on the committee, the council. My thought is to have NDE facilitate the application process. Upon receiving the applications, NDE staff and the respective State Board of Education representative would together select two members, perhaps a teacher from PK through 5, and the other from 6th through 12th grade. And these 16 individuals would be then brought forth to the full board for approval. And this would be the terms of their, their terms on the council would correspond to the representatives' terms. Now, may I share my rationale? Share my rationale. Currently, we are asked to approve a group of 16 individuals that we know very little about. We are given their names, addresses, contact information, and the school affiliation of some of them, but not all of them. My proposal process would bring about better vetting, thus a more informed vote. Making the application process available to all teachers of Nebraska seems like the right thing to do. Some teachers may not belong to a teacher's organization because of the cost of membership. I do not believe one's financial situation should be an impediment to being considered. And there are other reasons besides financial ones that individuals may have for not being a union member. And personally, I don't believe membership in any teacher organization makes an individual any better qualified or better suited than a non-member to serve on the NCTE. I believe this would provide balanced, fair representative representation. Currently, of the two State Board of Education-appointed members, both are from rural Nebraska. Of the NSCA-selected members, 11 are from the metro area and three from rural. And I'm actually including Grand Island as a rural, although I believe it has a lot of metro characteristics. The other two rural members are from Diller and Harrison, definitely rural. With my proposal, non-public school teachers would also be given an opportunity to apply. And then at that point, I invited comments from NDE staff and committee members regarding my proposal. And so I would open that up at this time to the full board. Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions or comments for Sheri? Or just discussion comments in general? Deb?
Yeah, I keep thinking about our discussion yesterday, and I appreciate your raising the question, and I look forward to continuing the discussion, and I think you've made some really good points. Thank you.
Seeing no further comments. Item 7.4, Chair Maggie Douglas will report on behalf of the Rules and Regulations Committee meeting.
All right, my eyes. Okay. The Rules and Regulations Committee reports on the February 6, 2025 meeting of the committee. Members present were Chair Maggie Douglas, Vice Chair Liz Renner, Kirk Penner, and Elizabeth Tegmeyer. NDE staff provided an overview of the rule-making process. Committee members reviewed the rules report. The committee reviewed the hearing draft of Rule 3, Identification of High Ability Learners, and may provide feedback to the commissioner within the next week before the hearing draft is approved. The committee reviewed policy issues related to potential revisions of Rule 11, regulations for the approval of pre-kindergarten programs, and a proposed revision timeline. The committee reviewed necessary revisions for Rule 86, breakfast meals served at public schools, and a proposed revision timeline. The committee will continue discussions and plans to recommend revisions to the board within the year on both rules. Last, the committee reviewed the approval process for educator preparation programs pursuant to Rule 20, and discussed potential revisions to ensure compliance. The committee will continue discussions and plans to recommend revisions to the board within the year. This concludes the Rules and Regulations Committee report. Maggie Douglas, Chair.
Are there any questions on the Rules and Regulations Committee report? Any discussion? Nope. Okay. All right. There is no additional business because nothing was pulled from the consent agenda. So we have items 9.1 and 9.2. These are information items and written reports for the board. Agenda item 10, Good of the Order. This section of the agenda is intended for board members to offer informal observations of the work of the state board. Board members may make brief announcements about attendance at future events for the purpose of informing other board members. No business or motions or suggested actions of the board may be offered at this point in the agenda, nor should board members engage in substantive discussion about other agenda items or introduce new agenda items. Sheri?
I do have something for the Good of the Order, President Tegmeyer. Last week, Governor Pillen issued a proclamation recognizing January 26 through February 1, 2025 as Nebraska School Choice Week. As stated on the governor's website, I quote, "School choice is a process of allowing every family to choose the K through 12 educational options that best fit their children," end of quote. I just wanted to share that. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheri. Anyone else have anything to share? Thank you to those who attended in person and who tuned into the broadcast. The next meeting of the State Board of Education are scheduled for March 6 and 7, 2025, in Lincoln, Nebraska. The February 7, 2025 State Board meeting is adjourned.